Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Ms. Whitby, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson will be absent. Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Ginn?
Here.
Height?
Present.
The quorum is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for prayer and pledge to be done by Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to be before you to do the business of the city of North Little Rock. Lord, we just ask for you to watch over us as we make the decisions for the city of North Little Rock. Watch us as we travel home tonight, Lord. Watch us this week, watch us this month, and watch us this year as we go about our business and spend time with our families and just do the business of the city of North Little Rock. Lord, we ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let it take you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, we have two. Anybody want to pull one of those?
To accept the file one and two.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me make a quick announcement. I think most of you might have read about it in the paper that the White Pig Inn down on Broadway is closing after being open for 100 years. And Greg Seaton is the third generation that owns that. And I haven't talked to Greg, but I feel certain he's got two restaurants, and it just got to be too much for him. So it's going to be open for the next two weeks and before it closes. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew about that, that maybe you can get down there in the last two weeks and say that you were there for the last week of its 100-year history. So we thank the Seaton family for being a stable part of our community for such a long time. Okay, two public comments for legislation coming up. First, we have Nick Frankie, R 1905.
Three minutes, please.
Good afternoon, or good evening, ladies and gentlemen, sir. I realize I was a little too passionate last time. I need to take a little bit of passion out of it. And I went ahead and sent you all an email with the facts in it. The facts isn't written. Did you not receive any emails? Mr. Harris? No email from me?
Um, today?
No, it was last week. We give you guys plenty of time to read it.
Man, I do not know. We have a thing called, I don't know. I have to look at it sometime.
Okay, I understand.
It blocks stuff and I have to go in and release it or something like that. So I don't know. So sometimes I'm not as good about that.
I'm just specifically you, because we've corresponded before.
Okay, okay.
I was on your block list.
No.
But I did send an email describing the ramp, the rehab project for the private hangar of Mr. Don Blakely, Donald Blakely, one of the airport commissioners, the $65,000 that we, the citizens of North Little Rock, spent on his hangar. And it's, you know, I sent the grant application, because Mr. Clay Rogers did apply for a grant, but the grant applications, because it is Mr. Blakely's private hangar, private leasehold that nobody else is allowed to use. Matter of fact, he has a fence around it, that the federal grant money, that was not appropriate to spend federal grant money on it. And that's why we spent money out of the North Little Rock budget on it. And again, I'd like to point out that, you know, I could do the research for you, like I did before, but we need to read the emails, that no other airport in the state of Arkansas takes money, takes welfare, from a municipality. We're the only one, the only one. And we send them, I see that, yeah, the budget this year was for $100,000. Mr. Rogers, Clay Rogers, is mismanaging our money over there. He's mismanaging the airport funds, he's mismanaging the airport, and he's mismanaging by taking our municipal funds. And if you look at his budget, he's spending, he spent almost $300,000 on capital equipment. I'd like to have a picture or know what kind of equipment he's buying. There needs to be a little more transparency. It's kind of hidden there. If he's not spending on equipment, how much money does, how much money does the airport have squirreled away? They have a big bank account somewhere that nobody knows about, that they're not being transparent, not letting us know about? They're just saving money for a rainy day project or something like that? And the $4 million bond, I think that's ridiculous. I don't know what Mr. Chisholm told you. I'd like to see the grant applications for that, if any were made, for the, you know, to build another hangar. If you need Mr. Chisholm's information, I have it here. I know that they're spending about $18 million this year, or in the last three years, here in Arkansas, in Arkansas airports. And it kind of devolved into, you know, not just a rhetorical thing last time. So if there's any questions, I have all that information right here. And again, I can resend the emails. I just used the email address that was on the North Little Rock website, on the city, @gov@nlr.gov, I think.
Thank you.
Did you get it?
Robert Fury.
I didn't get it.
Got it.
I didn't get it.
Robert Fury, 7205 Pontiac Drive, Ward 4. For those that were sleeping or didn't watch on TV the last few council meetings, retired civil engineer specialized in airport planning and design for 35 years. The decision making at the airport over the years has been anything but transparent. It's been irresponsible, a lot of shady deals. You had an airport master plan developed years ago, and one of the things it added was northeast-southwest runway 523 and a large apron on the east side. Master plan called for the new terminal, for a terminal building to be built on the northwest end of, sorry, the southwest end of that large ramp, a great location for an airport The city allowed, rather than building an airport terminal, the city allowed a large private hangar to be built at that location. I know it's been occupied by Don Blakely and Mac Hogan. I don't know who owns the hangar. They've had it for a long time. It's probably one of the largest hangars out there. It's a great site for an airport terminal. Didn't build a terminal there, so an admin building was built off the apron to the northwest. I don't know if it's used. Y'all have, y'all have had a city hangar out there for many years. And the management contract for that hangar was given to an insider. There was some competition, but the competition was squashed. Years ago, part of the west ramp that had some federal funds in the construction of it, the city allowed an insider to remove part of that pavement and pour a foundation for a private hangar. None of that was done with, in accordance with FAA procedures. The airport commission has seven members. Five of them, their terms have been expired for some time. I don't know what the legality is or properness is, proper, how proper it is for decisions made by an airport commission to be effective if the majority of the members aren't...
Thank you very much. Mr. James R., R 1905, three minutes.
All I have to say is I hope you all see a need for improving that airport. And I don't understand why certain people want to get up here and condemn it. We need it. The only thing I don't agree with is that I think the bond money ought to go up, and the citizens should not have to pay it. So I'm sure you all work on it. I hope you appreciate me saying that. Somebody must not took their medication.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Whitby, let's go into unfinished business.
R 1905, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution expressing an intent to issue revenue bonds for the purpose of financing improvements to the North Little Rock Airport authorizing the mayor to execute engagement letters with bond counsel and underwriters.
How about a motion? Move for adoption. In a second.
I'll second.
The, just a reminder to everybody that all this is doing is giving me permission to go take the next step. And that step will be to expand these drawings enough that we can get better prices on what the thing's going to cost. It'll give us an opportunity to find out how much the money's going to cost, and it'll give us an opportunity and a good enough set of plans to apply for grants with the State Air Nautics Board. So nothing further. You know, after we get all the information, better drawings, better money, then we'll come back, get the permission to go forward. So all we're doing is saying, Joe, take another step. So any discussions, comments? Ms. Ross?
Okay, I kind of feel like I'm going to catch 22 here because, you know, without, you know, I keep saying I want to see plans, I want to see, I want to see plans, but without us doing this, then we can't, you can't go out and get plans, from what I understand.
Right.
This is not, so I'm going to vote yes, just because I want to see some plans. I want to see if this could be done in phases. I'm not necessarily for $4 million right off the bat, but I want to see if we could just maybe take one bite out of the elephant at one time, do it in phases possibly. So without plans, we can't do that. And also, you know, we keep hearing, let's go out for grants, but unless we have plans, I don't understand why we could go out for grants.
If y'all remember, when we had a meeting out at the airport, invited y'all all to come, that the director of the State Air Nautics Board was there. So he's been involved in this since the get-go. So he's waiting on us to sit down with him and see if there's some money available. Ms. White?
At this point, is there any money that this is going to cost us in the city to proceed from this point?
Well, possibly. We'll have to go through the procedure to choose an architect. And if, sometimes architects will say that they'll do some work and bet on the come. Sometimes they want to charge you a minimum fee, but there'll be a little bit of money, but it won't be a whole lot.
What, just approx?
10 grand.
Where will that come from?
It'll probably come out of the airport budget. Right, Karen?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? On the motion.
Wait a minute, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. When I first got this piece of paper, it said McFarland on it. Today, I got one that says Garber on it. Have we changed?
Well, that other one was really old, and that was that architectural company we got out of Tulsa. And what I asked Garber to do was take what they had and update it so that it showed moving the FBO to the front. And then you see on that aerial, it's showing you the bigger hangar in the back. The original plans was going to have the big hammer on, hangar on the front. So Garber, who's our engineer at the airport, changed all that for us.
That's good. There was something else. Are we going to do a feasibility study on this to see how, how it's going to profit us?
Well, as I've said many a times...
It's not going to profit us, right?
No, no.
Okay, well, if we, if we look at our finances, about how much money does the airport make for us right now? Let's say last year, was it about $200,000, $300,000, I'm guessing?
No.
Last time I saw?
Uh-uh.
Does someone know?
Well, we, we gave them $100,000 last year that we haven't spent. Am I correct? And I think the budget, we probably ended up with $50,000 that we didn't spend out of their, from their income. Would you say that, ballpark? Yeah, so it cash flowed $50,000 worth.
Okay, I'm, I'm new at this, so just bear with me a minute.
Sure.
But if, if I was going to buy a house myself personally, and I didn't have enough money, I believe I would save for, you know, several years till I could get a good down payment on it and then do it. But we're asking the airport, which is probably less than 1% of our voters or our citizens of North Little Rock, that use that. And there's a lot of people don't even know where it is, you know? But we're asking for $4 million. I'm just wondering if maybe we couldn't ask the airport to maybe let us buy one or two hangars, get them some money coming in, then let them save some money, and then over a period of years, they could have what they want. You know, like eliminate this down to about 1 million instead of 4 million, let them try to earn some more money, you know, themselves, like we've heard other cities right here in Arkansas do. They do it the same way. You know, they don't come to the council for money.
Well, they do too.
Well, I guess Conway did when they had the storm, but Biden and Benton don't.
Remember that this is all about economic development.
Okay.
Period. Bottom line.
Okay.
You weren't on the council when we had the three of our larger employers. Oakley has 1,000 employees, Maverick has more than that. And, you know, they're the ones that came to us and said, you've got to do something about your airport, that when we bring people in, it's embarrassing, you know, because it's in such bad shape. And so it's all about economic development. Doesn't have anything else to do with anything other than economic development. Will it pay us back in spades? Well, as long as we can keep those 1,000 people employed, absolutely it will. As long as we can keep Steve Williams with Maverick keeping his headquarters here, absolutely it will. So, you know, all those issues, what we do, we don't make money. We're not here to make money. Some of the things we do, the, one of the, the T-hangers that were built, we've already got a waiting list for it. So it'll cash flow, but the others won't. You know, I mean, like the parks department, you know, we spend $6 million on our parks. And how much money does it make?
That's, that's true.
You know, our golf course cost us probably $300,000 or $400,000 a year to have the golf course. Tennis court's the same way. I mean, we don't do this. We, we're here to provide a service to our people, whether it's recreational or whether it's business. And that's, that's why we do what we do.
Okay, one other question. What about, he was talking about grants. Has, I would like to know, are there any applications for grants for this project?
No.
And there won't be?
No, there will be.
Oh, there will be?
Yeah, but I've got to have a little bit more information and a little bit better plans before I go to the State Air Nautics Board.
Okay.
You know, they, they tend to spend most of their money on runways, lighting, and safety issues. And if there's any money left over, then they let you do buildings and structures with it. So it's not going to be on the top of their list, but if there's money left over when the, when it's all over with, the director over there says he's going to do everything he can for us.
One more thing?
Okay.
Then I'll hush. I asked a friend of mine to do an amortization schedule. If we took $4 million at 6% with 30 annual payments, our total payments are going to be $8,700. That's rounded off. I don't know that the citizens of North Little Rock, I can't speak for all of them, but I don't think they really want to spend 30 years paying for an airport when there's just a few people that use it. Now, I realize what you're saying too. I understand that.
Well, several things. Number one, the interest rate won't be 4%. It'll be, it'll be a tax credit, you know, issued bond, so it'll be a lot less than that. Won't be for 30 years either. And we're also thinking about that we might very well finance it ourselves and pay that, pay that interest rate to ourselves. So we just, we hadn't got there yet. You know, I mean, we're not making any decisions tonight other than giving me permission to take another step. And then we'll come back with, this is the plan, this is what it's going to cost, and these are our options. You know, we'll do, we could do options like phasing it in, like Ms. Ross said, you know, we can do an option of paying for part of it and then financing the rest. I mean, you know, and we've been doing something similar to what you talk about. We've, we've put back, how much, Karen, do you think we have in that construction fund at the airport? We've been putting back for the last two or three years? 300, 400,000? Yeah, so we've been doing what you said. Since I took office, I've been sticking money in a construction account in anticipation that this was going to finally get to where we had to do it. And when our biggest employers came to me and said, Joe, you got to do something, I said, it's time to pull the trigger. So that's where we are.
I understand.
Okay, on the motion. Ms. Height?
I just want to add a quick comment, and I, and I agree with your thoughts about economic development. I've talked to a couple of people that are, that use the airport out there and have used it for years. Their names have not come up out here in our public, in their comments, but both of them have been customers of our Little, North Little Rock Airport for years, and they both agree that if North Little Rock is going to get in, be in the airport business, we've got to, we've got to update it. And it's kind of like building a ball field, you know? We build a baseball field, they'll come. We're going to, if we're, if we're going to be in the airport business to attract future customers, not just take care of the customers that we have, we've got to spend some money. And for that reason, I'm, I'm agreeing with Alderman Ross. I'm voting to give you the opportunity to bring back, bring a plan back to us so we know what we're going to be doing out there. But without that, after that vote tonight, we wouldn't be going anywhere. So I'm voting for...
Okay, thank you, sir.
...the legislation.
Ms. Ross?
And I don't know about the terms expiring. I haven't checked that or anything, but I do have someone that has volunteered that wants to be on the airport commission. So when you're renewing the terms or reappointing...
Yeah, and I, I know that we, you know, of course, you know, a commissioner serves, continues to serve even if his term has expired.
Right.
And what I've been looking for is some younger people that have some interest. And I was also, I didn't want a brand-new commissioner out there while we were trying to get something like this done, because they come in and not having any experience and not having any history with the construction and things like that, that they would be at a disadvantage. So that's kind of why I've been dragging my feet on that. Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
No.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda. We have one, two, three. Anybody want to pull one?
Yes, R 1936.
R 1936, let's pull it. All in favor of 37 and 38, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries on 37 and 38. And if you'll call 36?
A resolution confirming the appointment of Dr. Jay Barth to the Board of Commissioners of Central Arkansas Water.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Jay is here. And Jay, once you come up, the microphone, Ms. Whitby is going to give you the swearing-in ceremony. Of all the commissioners that we appoint over the years, you're probably the most vetted. You know, I mean, you went through a process of interviews and everything else that, that it's required at CAW. So you've got a tremendous amount of respect over there. I've talked to some of your co-commissioners-to-be and your director over there, and so you've become very highly recommended. So we certainly do appreciate your offer to serve.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for allowing me to serve in this way. Appreciate it.
Ms. Whitby?
Dr. Jay Barth?
Aye, Dr. Jay Barth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of Central Arkansas Water...
Of Central Arkansas Water, Board of Commissioners?
For the city of North Little Rock?
For the city of North Little Rock?
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Doctor. We appreciate you so much. Okay, let's go to new business.
R 1939, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing payment of additional funds to Hyde Co. Inc. for the repair of the Lehman Library Fountain, appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, y'all, this is additional monies that we had to spend because of the, they actually took the storm water system and dumped it, were dumping it into where the pumps were, and that was one of the reasons that it didn't work. So we had to pay a little bit extra to have that diverted. So that's with that. And I'm going to be coming back because we've got some leaks out there, and we're just trying to get our arms around that too. But for right now, this is what I need to pay a three- or four-month-old bill. So on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 1940, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution amending the 2019 budget for the city of North Little Rock to reauthorize and include additional expenditures for specified departmental budgets.
Move for adoption. We have an amendment.
How about a second?
Second.
State your amendment.
I think Ms. got passed all these out here. There's two, she can explain.
Mayor and council members, thank you. After the exhibit was sent out with the legislation last week, we had, under Community Development Fund, the second line, so it's about midway through the first page, we actually ended up canceling that purchase order, so I've struck through that line. And then, right under Community Development, Parks Fund, I failed to include that money that we needed to carry over to do the repairs at O'Mill and the amount of $35,000. There's no PO issued right now, so that's budget-only. And we'll probably be doing a lot of this since we've got this capital, this sales tax money. If you notice, several of these items are on the back page, the 2017 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund, those are big, you know, projects, y'all, that we're doing, that we have, you know, we issue a PO for the whole project cost, and then, you know, we spend out of the PO as the project is progressing. But there's going to be a lot of carryforward year to year until we wrap up all the spending from those funds.
That's my amendment.
Okay, how about a second for the amendment?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
a lot of carryforward year-to-year until we wrap up all the spending from those funds.
That's my amendment.
Okay, how about a second for the amendment?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment, call roll, please.
Nice try, Mayor.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. nineteen forty-one, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at seventeen twenty-four Franklin Street, otherwise known as thirteen sixteen West Shorteenth Street, the city of North Little Rock, constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on seventeen twenty-four Franklin, otherwise known as thirteen sixteen West Short Seventeenth Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. nineteen forty-two, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at thirty-six eighteen Gum Street, the city of North Little Rock, constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
How about a motion?
Before adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Thirty-six eighteen Gum Street, anyone here to speak on thirty-six eighteen Gum? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. nineteen forty-three, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at sixteen oh four North Olive Street, the city of North Little Rock, constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on sixteen oh four North Olive Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. nineteen forty-four, Mayor Smith.
Wanna withdraw that?
Okay.
Just being torn down maybe this week.
Okay. Ordinances, oh nineteen sixteen, Mayor Smith.
Okay, y'all, let me tell you what we're doing here, if you don't already know. Our very excellent planning department has started following up on special or conditional uses that do not come to be. And the only way to clean that up is to revoke these conditional uses. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna do about nine, I think, tonight, and we'll do nine more or so the next two or three meetings.
Next two meetings.
Next two meetings. So that's all we're doing, just cleaning up our books and-
Do they all have the, Mayor, do they all have the same reason that we're revoking them?
Yeah, none of them actually happened. Sean, you wanna explain that?
None, none of them followed through, got a business license or even opened.
Okay.
So they came through, you guys got a vote on it, and then never followed through.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we gotta do one at a time, so my city attorney tells me, so we can suspend the readings on all of them at one at a time. Oh nineteen sixteen, call it, please.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number seventy-seven twenty-two to revoke a conditional use for certain real property located at forty-four oh seven Camp Robinson Road, the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move away of all readings.
Second.
On the motion, suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. nineteen seventeen, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance seventy-seven thirty-two to revoke a conditional use for certain real property located at fourteen hundred Locust Street, the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen eighteen, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number seventy-eight, excuse me, seventy-eight forty-eight to revoke a conditional use for certain real property located at forty-two thirty-two Bach and Pike in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen nineteen, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty fifty-eight to revoke a conditional use for certain real property located at twenty-two oh four Highway one sixty-one, the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I just wanna explain, too, that these are like ten years old, that they, so it's not like we're just something that they came in a year and a half ago that we're revoking. So these are really old, at least ten years old, some of them, so, yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen twenty, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty sixty-two to revoke a conditional use for property located at four thousand eight MacArthur Drive, in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen twenty-one, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Hold on, I flipped over too far. An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-one twenty-six to revoke a conditional use for property located at one zero four oh one Riverview Corporate Drive, in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen twenty-four, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-two eighty-nine to revoke a conditional use for property located at thirty-six oh four Highway one sixty-one, the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen twenty-five, Mayor Smith.
Let it be known that if I was your city attorney, I would've approved to do the, all these at one time, so, not pointing any fingers.
I feel like they pointed at me.
Oh nineteen twenty-five, call it, please.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing payment to Arkansas Power Steering and Hydraulics for the repair of a city sanitation truck, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen twenty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for comprehensive loss and business interruption insurance for the Murray Hydroelectric Plant, authorizing the mayor to execute an insurance agreement, first reading.
Move to suspend the rule, all readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen twenty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for comprehensive loss and business interruption insurance for the Murray Hydroelectric Plant, authorizing the mayor to execute an insurance agreement, first reading.
Move to suspend the rule, all readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Ms. Ross.
Mayor, I can't vote for this because I still feel like we need a pedestrian bridge or something down there. If there's any way that we could turn that into a pedestrian bridge. We have children on the other side of the track that walk over to the Boys Club. And I know I've sent you pictures before when I've been going through there. I'll take a picture of a train coming back in an hour and thirty minutes and that same train's sitting there. I know they're only supposed to stay twenty minutes, but if you're a twelve or thirteen-year-old and you're wanting to get to the Boys Club, you're not gonna walk, what, ten blocks, twenty-two blocks to go around, to get around that. So if there's any way to leave that as a pedestrian bridge, that's the only way I could have.
We have found no options there. We have looked and we have found no options. And the railroad wants this down. It's in bad shape and they're gonna pay for it. Plus, they're gonna give us seventy-seven thousand dollars. This is the best that we could possibly do. I understand the safety issue for the children. We're just gonna have to do a learning process for them that you can't jump under a railroad train, so.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I was wondering how much it would cost to build a children's crosswalk?
A bunch.
More than the seventy thousand for sure?
Yeah.
Lot more? Okay.
Yep. And I know that from experience, you know, because just like the one over Ridge Road. I remember one school district built that. It was a jillion dollars. And then we also looked at putting one possibly at Main Street when we built the new high school. And it was just cost prohibitive. All right, where are we, Ms. Whitby?
Um, you have a motion.
Motion to suspend the readings. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
I had a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, so the railroad's one is done. I mean, what happens if it don't pass council? Then it just sits there?
Yeah. I don't know if they would have the right to tear it down without our permission.
I am not sure about that because I have not looked at it. It would probably be quite a legal process.
Yeah, I would bet they can. It's their right of way. And railroads have so much authority, they almost have more authority than we do. So they could tear it down without our permission.
Yeah, they've got, they've got rights to the federal government that we don't have. The railroad does.
On the motion.
Got a big hammer.
A motion to...
Hold on a minute.
Yeah, I have a question. It might be for Chief Davis, I'm not sure. Are we, is there any, are we seeing people walk across this bridge even though it's been blocked off to cars?
Yes.
So there are pedestrians and children using the bridge that's existing right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Which I'm not comfortable with. For sure. Yep.
Can that, that existing bridge couldn't be made just for pedestrians, you'd say, any kind of...
I'd be willing to bet that if, if we told the railroad, "No," that we want it to be used for pedestrians, they would block it off. Because they don't want the liability if somebody fallen through, you know, one of the boards or, you know, rotted out or whatever else. And, you know, who's to say that, you know, it'd take, you know, would four kids on bicycles be enough weight? Probably not, but nobody's gonna take that chance, especially as a railroad. I know this is not a fun thing to do, but it's probably our only option. All right, we have a motion to suspend.
Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes.
Unfortunately, it's not an F. You mean two-thirds.
Okay. All right, so we'll just hold it over to the next meeting for the second reading? Is that what you do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Oh nineteen twenty-eight, Councilmember Taylor.
We might, why don't you answer our questions for us?
I will look into that over the next two weeks about if we don't do this, then what their rights are.
Okay.
I will do that and have a report for you all next time.
Did we suspend all readings on that or was this the first reading?
You suspended.
That was to suspend all readings.
Suspended all readings, but you would still need a motion to adopt.
And I thought you didn't sus, I thought that was the vote on the motion to suspend the readings and it failed.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, so it'll be read next meeting.
So it just remains on the agenda now till the next meeting unless the sponsor withdraws it. Because the, the motion to adopt did not fail. The motion to suspend failed.
There hadn't been a motion to adopt yet.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Sorry, I got that twisted in my head, but I got it outright.
It twisted in my head too.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Okay, wait a minute.
All right. Yes, ma'am?
So if the railroad can just tear it down, why have we put money into this bridge over the years? But then they can just go in and tear it down even though that we have contributed money to this bridge along the way?
Probably it was that they said, "We're not gonna spend any money on it. If you wanna patch it, patch it."
Gotcha.
Until it got so bad that they wouldn't accept a patch.
So if we wanted to do whatever we could, or at least just take the time to look at it to see what it would take to make that into a pedestrian bridge?
Can't.
I mean, can we do that? I mean, if it was just one safety path across and then you block all the rest off, it's just, you know, this isn't our ward. And we, we hear from the residents down there and we hear about these kids crawling, when the trains stop crawling across there. I'm telling you, I had boys and if they were in a hurry, and I know what it's like to be, have, you know, young boys and girls too. You know, if they wanna get there, they're not gonna go twenty-two blocks around to get to the Boys Club or to go to their friend's house or whatever. That train's sitting there, so.
That's a good question, good question.
I wanna slow down.
Well, Chris is here and, Chris, take that ball and run with it to see if there's any way we can turn it into a pedestrian bridge other than what they've already told us, okay? And then council is gonna check on the legality of it.
I will.
Okay, we'll be, we'll know a lot more next, in two weeks. Okay.
Oh nineteen twenty-eight, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a hotel in a C-six zone for certain real property located at five oh one Main Street in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And the applicant is here.
The owners are here. And Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton, we certainly do wish you well in the Baker. And I've seen some pictures of the remodel. It's looking great and we wish y'all all the luck in the world.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Oh nineteen twenty-nine, Councilmember Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow a car lot in a C-four zone for property located at thirty-five thirty-five Highway one sixty-one, the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Motion to suspend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
About a motion?
So move.
I have a second.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the applicant's here because there's been some question on this as far as the pavement on the lot. I mean, I just wanna make sure that they understand. If you'd come up here, please, I just wanna make sure that you, I know we've gone back and forth on the pavement and that it does have to be asphalt or concrete.
Yes, ma'am, I'm working with a Mr. Tommy Bond, a civilian out of Jacksonville, and he's in constant contact with the planning department, Mr. David Forrest, so it will be done.
Okay, I just want sure that you understood all the conditions under there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I will abide by all of them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Baxter?
I don't know about most folks, but I don't go around looking for cars at five AM. Is that really a thing?
Does it say five AM? I started to say, I didn't see that in the original. I, me.
What does, what does the legislation say?
The legislation does say five AM.
I think that may be.
And I think that that's what was sent to us from planning unless we made a mistake on it, which is within the realm of possibility. But as far as I know, that's what was sent to us.
So I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
And Mr., do you have, what time would you? Can we change that to nine? I'd like to amend that to nine AM and thank you for catching that.
Okay, we've got a motion to move that from five thirty or five AM to nine AM.
I'll second that amendment.
And we have a second. How about on the motion?
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
All right. Oh nineteen thirty, Councilmember Baxter?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing special use for Bingo Hall in a C-three zone for property located at twenty-six fifty-five Pike Avenue in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption?
Give me a second.
Second.
A scandal.
Are the people here that have this?
Are your applicants here, Steve?
Yes, she's in the bay.
Can I speak to you a moment, please?
Are you Ms. Murdock? Okay. Keeter Murdock.
Okay, you're wanting to have a bingo here in North Little Rock. Where is your church located?
My church or?
Or, yeah.
The nonprofit.
The church that's, the nonprofit, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. I live in Bryan, Arkansas. Right now, we don't really have a specific location. Right now, we're just kinda starting out and trying to do our outreach into different churches locally. Like, we do Sums One Fifty, which is off of Kemp Robinson Road in North Little Rock. We work with them a lot.
What, what is your main goal, isn't it of serving women?
Yes, sir. What we would like to do is, you know, grow our monies to be able to help women that are like in different churches and stuff that have reached out, that have been formerly incarcerated or just had drug problems or just women that need to transition back into the world in a spirit, from a spiritual perspective. And right now, we do work with different churches, you know, through their outreaches and stuff like that, but we're just trying to grow a little bit bigger than what we are.
Hey, where are we, Ms. Whitby?
Uh, there's a motion to adopt.
Ms. White?
I have a question?
Go ahead.
Of the applicant, actually. Ms. Murdock, I was looking through the Planning Commission notes and there's a letter that accompanied the legislation and it was from your highly favored ministries, Women of God, and it's, has a listing of eight funding, fundraising activities that you'll be conducting. And the one I'm concerned about is, there's the Bingo Hall, raffles, car washes, walk-a-thon, talent show, women's conferences, but then there's one that says special events. And it's special events may include but are not limited to telethons, bake sales, garage sales, et cetera. But when I go down to the next paragraph, it says, "We currently have approximately sixty members. They have the right to attend conferences at a discounted rate and be able to use the facilities when available at no cost and first consideration for assistance from our programs." And I just wanna know, is there any way, this is an event center of, I mean, if any way?
I think that that's probably along the lines of what we eventually would like to be doing, you know? But right now, we just wanna focus on building from the sales, the bake sales, the car washes, the back-to-school program, things like that to kinda help out. But we understand that we're not an event center. We're just strictly running the Bingo Hall for our ministry.
Okay.
You plan on having those events at your building?
Well, you know, like for the car wash, they kinda recommended maybe we don't do the car wash. But yes, like if we have like a fish fry or something like that or something like that or just a rod sale, stuff like that there.
May I continue to ask? If, if you did something like a fish fry or whatever, I mean, would alcohol be served?
No.
Would people be allowed to bring their own alcohol in?
No.
Okay.
No. We're talking about just, well, in my mind and in my vision, I'd say a fish fry, we just fry the fish and serve dinners to go from that place.
Okay. But it, there's no way it would evolve into an event center, you know? I mean, maybe have a party in the evenings that somebody would wanna rent the facility out?
No. I kinda think the only thing, no, we know that we're not an event center and we can't rent it out to do parties or birthdays or anything like that. And we understand that whatever we do, do there is just to raise the funds for our ministry.
Sean? One more question. It, is this special use, the way it's written, would it approve of, of event center?
No, it's not allowed by right. So you're welcome to add a number seven to the list and say no event center activities if that makes anybody feel comfortable. Number four on the list covers that they have to meet all city, county, state requirements. So one of the requirements is event centers have to have a separate special use.
Mr. Taylor?
Don't you have to have special permitting from DFNA to have a Bingo?
Yes.
We have our Bingo license.
Okay.
They started the process with the state police and going through all the paperwork on that.
Okay, that's, all right, but.
They have their, do you have your state license now?
Uh, we, well, we actually had our last meeting with them today with the auditor and she is submitting the paperwork for our license and said we'd have it in two to three business days.
Ross?
I have lots of questions. You know, the state site with the Bingo regulations, there's fifteen pages, so if you've been working on that, then that's a lot. Okay, so the nonprofit has been established over five years, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the nonprofit is highly?
Favorite ministries.
Favorite ministries, all right. Now, are you one of the officers of?
Yes, ma'am. My daughter's the chief CEO and I'm the operational officer.
Okay, because, you know, Bingo halls can only have volunteers, no paid employees.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you and your daughter will be there or will it be someone else from you? I'm just curious who your workers will be there since no one can be paid. It's strictly volunteer.
Yes, ma'am. And what I did was kinda reached out to a Bingo Hall that I'm familiar with and I asked a couple of the people to come and to volunteer with me and I have a couple of family members that are gonna volunteer as well.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be that people that are directly involved with your ministry that have to be there, correct?
Well, one person will have to be on-site at all times and that will be myself.
Okay, uh, no electronic devices, correct?
No, ma'am.
Absolutely no. And I, I was amazed that you have to buy your Bingo cards from a licensed distributor.
Yes, ma'am.
So you've got that all worked out and everything?
Yes, ma'am, we're using the one in Sherwood.
Okay, all right. And security, that's another big thing because we're talking, you're gonna have cash down there. So what kind of security are, now, they did say, you know, it does say in the state laws that you can pay for security. That's the only employee that you can have.
Yes.
So what kind of security are you gonna have? A licensed security?
Yes, ma'am, we've gotten with a local guy here in North Little Rock that's a security, has his own security company and we're gonna hire him.
Okay, so it is a licensed security company?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, let's see. Oh, what age limit will you have in there? Who, who will be allowed?
No one under eighteen.
Under eighteen? Okay, that was another. And then no alcohol, you said, correct?
No alcohol.
And it's only five hours, just Saturday and Sunday?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see, I think we got, I think we got it all covered.
What, what if you were gonna have a fish fry? Does it have to be in that window on Saturday and Sunday only or could you do it on a Tuesday night?
You can, the Bingo is only allowed within that timeframe on Saturday and Sunday, but.
Other activities she was describing can happen and are allowed by right any time of the day. I mean, the mall strip area may have some rules on the hours of operation, but all the other, all the activities and was there counseling or?
Yeah, we will do some counseling stuff.
That's all allowed by right.
Okay.
Any, any time of the day within reasonable hours.
Ms. Ross?
And one more, so, you know, services, now, you're not providing any kind of shelter in the facility, are you? Is it strictly just counseling?
Yes, ma'am. And, and my daughter, she's the one who's the mental health counselor. She's not here tonight.
Okay.
And I told her, well, they're gonna get up there and ask all questions that I have no idea about. But anyway, so, but she's the one who reaches out to the churches and get the list of women who may have been incarcerated or battered or struggling from drugs or something like that. She will then take those people in and, and try to introduce them to us and let her, let them know that we are a service that can help them through certain, you know, assets of their lives, you know? So she, she has the mental health degree.
Okay, so I'm just curious, so as far as funding, do you receive state funds for the counseling? Is that how, I mean, because this is a lot of work and a lot of, I'm just curious. And the rent for the building, I'm just curious, how would you pay? You know, I know that, you know, I didn't know if there was some state agency that pays for the counseling for the women or?
And this is all just not like, you know, like we're not saying we're professional counselors. We're gonna charge you for this and this. This is all on us. It's something that we just want to do to help our neighboring women.
So it's strictly just faith, faith-based volunteers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. One more time, if, if the alderman Baxter was willing to add an amendment number seven to put no events, if you'd be willing to amend your legislation?
I don't have a problem with that. If that'll make, make you feel more comfortable?
Well, we've, we've just been through this before and we're, we, I think we went back. We wish we had had that in.
Okay, we've got a motion to amend in number seven that will say no special events allowed. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes.
No special events or no events, period?
Events?
I think special events.
Uh, I'd say the operations not included in the event center.
Operations will not include in the event center?
Our definition of event centers are not permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, a fish fry would be, would that be considered an event? Do we wanna eliminate that?
No.
Because.
I think event center means we, for hire.
Would be running out the room for a wedding or something.
Correct.
Having a, having a fish fry with the truck out in the parking lot or something wouldn't necessarily.
Okay.
So it wouldn't restrict them from doing their ministerial activities?
Okay.
They, they wouldn't be able to advertise, say, this room is available on Mondays or Wednesdays.
Yeah, we don't really.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion to amend in a second.
Who made the motion to amend in the second?
Ms. White in second by Mr. Baxter.
Okay.
On the motion? Questions?
Well, I have a question, but it's not concerning the amendment.
Only amendment.
Okay, what, what's the exact amendment?
The operation will not include an event center. It'll be in added paragraph number seven in section two on the conditions.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, yes is your vote? White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Now, a question. I'm just curious, how are you gonna attract patrons and what, what would be attractive about your Bingo Hall or parlor or wherever you call it that would want me to come down there and play Bingo?
Oh, I'm gonna, you know, like, you mean like how am I gonna market people to come? Well, I'm just hopefully gonna do like emails, Facebook, you know, like that to market, do the marketing.
So, you know, I've not, I haven't been to a Bingo Hall ever, I don't think. So do I pay a fee when I come in the door?
Well, yes, sir, you, there's a pack that you buy and the pack will cover you for the night and you may pay fifteen dollars for it, but the games may be worth two hundred dollars, so, and you'll just play like that.
I'll take it, Charlie.
I'll go with you.
Bingo!
I'm not a gambler, I'm just.
All right, we've, we've got a motion to adopt. How about a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt as amended.
Do I have, we have a second, question?
Okay, so at Bingo, will you sell food and drinks and does that qualify for?
A and P tax?
Or since it's a nonprofit, does it, I'm just curious?
If it's prepared food and they're selling it, then yes.
Then they will need an A and P license, a hamburger tax license, so.
And a restaurant license with us.
It doesn't, and I don't, I don't quite know what you're talking, but I just want to say It doesn't have, and I don't, I don't quite know what you're talking, but I just want to say it doesn't have like, uh, grease traps, or there's just certain types of foods that we can serve, like packaged foods and stuff, so I don't know.
If it's, if it's prepackaged, it's not considered prepared, but if it is, say you hand them a bowl of lettuce and a fork, that makes it a prepared food item.
Okay.
Well, they need to get a license. Okay, you'll have to get with the city clerk to get a business license.
Well, and, and we spoke a few months ago, so, so she is aware the nonprofit would get a license that would cover the nonprofit side and have bingo on that.
Okay.
And then if the?
She sells food.
She started doing prepared food, then that's gonna require health inspection and a lot of other things.
That is true.
Okay, on the motion?
On the motion to adopt is amended. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Hold up a second. Yep, I just had a thought. We don't require any kind of security, do we? We're not requiring security. I'm looking at Chief Davis. I know that we're further along, and I should have asked that sooner, but I'm just.
What's the question? I didn't hear you.
I said, "We're not requiring security in this legislation for the bingo hall. Is that something that we need to think about?"
Does the state license require security?
I don't think it requires security. It just says that you can pay security out of it. I'm just, I'm looking at Chief Davis here on this one.
Why are you, why are you bringing that up? You think it needs security?
Because there's a lot of cash laying around there. And I know that Chief Davis was.
Yeah, they're not required to have security. I'm hoping that she does. We talked about this earlier today in our office about the amount of money that will be coming. Luckily, it's two days, Saturday and Sunday, during the day, during the daylight for the most part, so I'm hoping that, uh, helps with it, but I will visit with her a little bit, and we'll try to work through something.
The Ashley group has, um, twenty-four-seven security for the parking lot. But I will still have our own security as well.
I just don't, I just want to make sure it's not a drain on our safety resources in the city, is what I'm thinking. So, if, if it does become a problem, I'm sure Chief Davis will let us know, and we'll come back and, and talk about it. Okay, where are we?
Need the second on the motion to adopt?
I don't know, but I, I'll second it.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask a quick question. Sean, can we come back at a later time and add, uh, requirements of security, uh, okay, thank you very much. On the motion?
So we already had a motion to adopt, but I just missed who made the second, so I'm taking that second. So on the emergency now, Ross?
But how do we come back and add security afterwards, I don't, after we've already given them the right to?
To amend the ordinance?
After they're already in business?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
Okay, oh nineteen thirty-one, Councilmembers Robinson and Taylor.
Please call it.
Sure. An ordinance approving a request to waive requirements of the master plant, master street plan for half-street improvements for property located along Cheryl and Gribble Streets in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
On a motion to adopt?
The move.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Hyde?
Yes.
If you're not aware, um, and this is economic development again, um, this is to help the Oakley Company, that I told you has so many employees, that's requesting the airport stuff, is building a corporate headquarters down there with two hundred employees. So, that's why we make these people happy. Next one.
Okay, oh nineteen thirty-two. Wait a minute, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
I just, I, brain blown. Okay, oh nineteen thirty-two, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at fifteen eighteen Parker Street in the city of North Little Rock, from R-three zoning classification to planned use development, PUD, zoning classification by amending ordinance seventy-six ninety-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all ratings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Hyde?
Yes.
About a motion?
The move.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann? And Hyde?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Hyde?
Yes.
And just so you know, the folks from Oakley and Mr. Marler are here as well.
Thank you, Mike. Sorry, you were the last one on the list. You know, if you took some chocolates over to Legal, you might be able to get you moved up the list a little bit. So, thank you for your patience, and, uh, who's here from Oakley? Who's here from Oakley? Thank you, guys. Y'all run a great company, and we're glad to be partners with you. Um, okay, public comments.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I be excused?
Absolutely.
My grandson's basketball tournament game is about to start.
Well, you better hurry. Uh, first, first off, public comment is Jerry Havens, one oh nine Sanders Drive. Mr. Havens?
Hello, City Council. Uh, about three years ago, and I sent you a letter on it, I, I had a problem with a culvert out there between one oh nine and one oh five Saunders that was totally collapsed, and I called it, I, I sent you a letter on it. You sent, uh, Mr. Bradley out and, which did nothing for a long time. But, uh, anyway, uh, this culvert collects all the water from about two blocks down there, and then about a block on the other one. I called and told him it was totally collapsed. Mr. Lane called me back after I'd called him, and, uh, I told him it was collapsed, he said, "No, it didn't." I said, "Well, sir, it is collapsed." He said, "No, you just know it all," and he said he, and he hung up. So that was the response I got from him. And I came to your speeches, and I listened to you about the, uh, the, uh, drainage and all, and, uh, you said that, uh, in any case of disaster or anything, that, uh, you, you need a dis tax because you could respond before the federal government could. Well, you didn't. And FEMA came, did come out there, and, uh, they did allow me a little money on a duck work. That's not even what I asked. Let's say it cost me four thousand dollars on a heating unit, twice. I mean, four thousand dollar total, cost me, simply because the city neglected that one culvert because it was collapsed. And Mr. Bradley never got down in there and looked at it, and, uh, I, the, uh, street department came out there, and they got a soccer ball out of it, and they kind of elated about that, and I said, "That's not the problem." I said, "There is a problem with that. It is collapsing inside," and it was. And, uh, finally, I got ahold of Mr. Taylor, and I want to thank Mr. Taylor for doing it. And after I got ahold of him, he took care of it. Engineers came out there, and that was about eleven months later. That's after the fact. That, this thing flooded me twice, and I'm the only house in there. And FEMA had to come out there because the city, someone from the city had to send them out there, because no one else knew about this but me and David next door. And, uh, anyway, they came out there and they took care of the problem, and, uh, they did do a good job. But I said all that to say this, that ditch behind North Shore, which takes care of all the water in North Shore, it, it's stopped up, and it's been stopped up for over a year. It stinks in the summertime, it's mosquito larvae gets in it, and lays the eggs in it, and it hadn't been cleaned out, and I couldn't tell you when. And, uh, something needs to be done, because if we have another rain like we did in nineteen seventy-eight, some of y'all may not remember, but it rained eleven inches in six hours. It will flood North Shore because that's the only, that's the only ditch out there that goes west of North Shore and north down Lynch that takes care of the water. It used to drain all the way to Faulkner Lake, but that ditch is, is long gone. George Wilcox used to own that down there, and he kept that cleaned out, but it's no longer taken care of. If, if they'd have done this years ago and run that ditch all the way to the river, that'd been taken care of. That would have solved the problem. But this is a ditch out there that goes, it's stopped up, and it's not Beaver Dams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Mr. Hart?
You'll have to forgive me because I have a complaint. There's on the books, city ordinance, we're not allowed to feed stray dogs or anything, and I disagree with you, because when it's been real, real cold, there may be dogs that escape. But yet, if I feed them, and the animal control catches me, I get to have to pay a fine. And I have no quarrels with the ordinance, but I do think you should give some consideration when it's extremely cold, and they can't get food or water, or they've lost their way from their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any council members have anything for the good of the order tonight? Ms. White?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hungry, so I don't really want to be here much longer, but, um, there is something that I need to bring up, and since we were talking about the railroad bridge, it kind of brings it to my mind. Um, I was at, recently at a neighborhood meeting where the, one of the residents, uh, reported that they had seen, this is at the whole area, had been seeing children crossing between the train cars, uh, along, you know, where Percy Machen is, and then the, uh, the kids come across from that area, and the trains are stopped there. And, um, I ended up talking to the, uh, security people for Union Pacific, and I also spoke to, um, Chief Bradley. Um, to imagine high school kids or grade school kids crossing the railroad tracks with the train there between the cars. And this gentleman that reported it, I feel was a reliable person, that he was seeing kids do that. He said at least three times a week. He walks every morning in the neighborhood around, he leaves around six or six-thirty in the morning, and he sees them. And I've reported this, and I know that there's, you know, there's people that care, but there's, I don't know how to fix this. The railroad, uh, officer told me that one of the issues was, and this is his, his interpretation, the reason the trains were stopping there so long is because of Thirteenth Street, trying to keep that clear, push the trains back into the area where the high school kids and other kids would be crossing the tracks. I don't know if that's totally true or not, but it's certainly a consideration, that we're asking not to have Thirteenth Street blocked. And I don't want it blocked. I mean, I.
Well, you know, I mean.
And, and pushing it back into that neighborhood is what's part of the problem it's causing. Kids have to cross over between the cars because the trains are sitting there so long.
There's miles, miles and miles and miles of railroad track that, that run through neighborhoods all over the state.
Absolutely.
Uh, the, the biggest problem that we have right there is that a lot of these trains are going north-south, okay? And, uh, I have talked to the railroad a million times, and I'm not exaggerating. And I said that they ought to be better prepared to train their dispatchers to know that this particular train that's coming in from Van Buren, or wherever it's coming in from, is gonna be there at three-thirty in the afternoon, and they need to clear the tracks inside the yards so that it can cross over, yes, cross over probably seven or eight tracks, and head on to, to the south. And they agree with me every time I tell them that. Do they do it? No. Are they a little bit better than they used to be, a little bit? And I don't know how to fix it.
The, um, security officer told me that there are a lot of things, you know, if a, an engineer has been driving a certain amount of time, it has to stop. They might have to change drivers or engineers. I mean, there's all kinds of things that go into it, and I understand that, kind of like planes. But I just wanted it to, to bring it up, that this has been reported, and, and, and this, several years ago, I had someone from the school district contact me, and I spent a lot of time on this issue, you know, and to, really to the same end I'm at.